This and we had a great morning at church this morning. We had a good turnout, both at nine thirty and eleven. So good to see those of you I saw person and those of you I'm seeing now. Brief a brief devotion. This is Psalm forty six verses one through three. God is our refuge and strength, a help always near in times of great trouble. That's why we won't be afraid when the world falls apart. When the mountains crumble into the center of the sea, when its waters roar and rage. When the mountains shake because of its surging waves. Long, long, long before this year, long, long before I knew I would be returning to first Orlando. I've been excited about 2020. For a pastor, for a leader, that just felt like the perfect metaphor for a year to talk about vision and opportunity and possibility, right? I mean, it's pretty of 2020 vision, which I don't even with classes. You know, that's just you see clearly and perfectly. I thought, well, that 2020 will be the year of talking about the future and what's possible and envision. And and at the start of 2020, Emily and I were dedicating a whole lot of time to that kind of conversation and really imagine by this time that we would have real clarity about the future. That was before March hit and it it's been a bit of a different year, though we still talk a lot about vision. It certainly has changed the conversation. The the Psalmist said, we won't be afraid when the world falls apart, when the mountains crumble into the center of the sea, when its waters roar and rage. When the mountains shake because of its surging waves. It has obviously been a year of pandemic. Including a terrible season of toilet paper shortages. That just was frightening for some. Record breaking number of tropical storms as we as we speak mid November hurricane iota is being predicted to be hit the central America in force mid November. Murder hornets. Protests after the wrongful deaths of Ahmaud Arbery and George Floyd and others. A year of record breaking forest fires. Tornadoes in our own neighborhoods. Remember that earlier this year, right through Conway and Delaney Park. Layoffs and furloughs nationwide, but particularly hitting the tourism industry pretty tough. Heads to the national and local economy. And then there's been this little election thing that hasn't quite wound down yet, including protests yesterday in our nation's capital, including groups of white supremacists. I mean, just who imagined the day? And obviously, all of this has had an impact on the church. Rather than being a year of just imagining a bright shiny future, it's it's really been kind of a year of hanging on for a really wild ride. That isn't over yet. But this the Psalm provides just a very simple reminder. God is our refuge and strength, a help always near in times of great trouble. So that's the message tonight as we talk about possibilities and some some opportunities in the midst of difficulties. God is our refuge and strength, a help always near in times of trouble. That's why we won't be afraid when the world falls apart. Let's let's begin with a prayer. Laura, we thank you that that you've brought us this far through a difficult year. We know it's not over and we know there's challenges in the year to come, but we trust that you're with us. We trust that you are refuge and strength. We trust that you are bigger than the storm and we look to you to guide and lead us in this time. And in the days to come, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Well, our first item of business to share is coming from trustees folks on the call. Todd and I think Jill is on the call and John Styles Williams and maybe Roy Asbury. They're going to be sharing with you about a really great partnership with a local nonprofit. So take it away.
All right, we've got some exciting news. I know everyone's dying to find out about it. Um, thank you, Vance, for that devotion. Assuming we're all going to be here in 2021. We are, we have a brand new partnership that's going to be forming with a nonprofit group. It's the Homeless Services Network. I'm going to share my screen and show you all a list of questions, kind of FAQs that talks about what this group is all about. And then Todd and Jill, feel free to jump in and and kind of help fill some gaps. So starting April of of 2021, we're going to be come landlords to some some new tenants. The Homeless Services Network. Also known as HSN of Central Florida is a lead agency for the HUD Continuum of Care. And you see a number of other groups there, the Florida Commission on Homelessness, the Florida Department of Children and Families, the Veterans Administration Support Services for Families for areas including Osceola, Seminole and Orange Counties. So they have a very lot wide reach. And they're kind of an umbrella agency that helps provide grants and funding for a lot of the other nonprofit groups that that we know of and work with. As lead agency, HSN does not provide any direct services to persons experiencing homelessness, but they do perform coordination, planning and administrative functions for a lot of our partner agencies dedicated to provide direct crisis recovery and housing services. Todd, you want to speak to HSN a little bit and what they're all about?
Yeah, I back up just a fuzz, John, if you would. And this is a hugely exciting opportunity for us. They're very excited about it as well. I think these negotiations and conversations have been going on now for most of the year. At least half of the year, but just a caution that we've signed a non binding agreement with them. That's a letter of intent that that kind of says, here's what the terms we kind of agree to. We still have to work the release with what these folks and as y'all know, the the devil's in the details and that kind of thing. So I just, I want to preface that that in the real estate business, you know, we always say that, you know, time kills deals, you know, deal is really done until you get that signature on the lease and but 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 we are, we do feel very good about the partnership with how excited they are, we are, then and we think we'll get there. So put that aside. And and the HSN, John, as he spoke about is kind of the umbrella organization for all homeless services in our continuum continuum of care, which is our in Osceola and Seminole County. And they they manage all the HUD grants and everything that comes from the federal government that has to do with homelessness by the direction of a the Central Florida Commission on Homelessness, which is a committee of, you know, mayors and and county mayor, city mayors and and people very active in in Orlando in the in the homelessness committee. So as John says, no, no direct services by them in house. They do occasional regular kind of meetings and educational things for their their clients are basically the providers for folks that are providing services to the to the homeless. So if that's kind of what you where you were going, John.
Yes. And one of the things that's exciting about this, this potential partnership is is just how well we are missionally aligned. Not just as a Methodist church, but specifically as First United Methodist Church and what we've done in our history downtown with helping homelessness and and you also be know better than I do about how we helped form the Coalition for the Homeless and the things we've done to work with how I did that he came came about and and all the work that's been done up to this point where First Church is is again and again reached out to be a solution and help those who are experiencing poverty and homelessness. And so HSN, as you see, they have a similar mission. And I just was with, we wanted to make sure it was something that was, if we were going to go forward and find a way to better utilize our space to help serve the community and the kingdom, we want to find someone who is missionally aligned and and the with Vance and Emily's leadership and with trustees, direction and guidance, we have think we found a great partner that would be just, we call it kind of a marriage being that it takes strong communication, takes some compromise and takes some 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 give and take between the two parties, but we feel like we have a with work ironing out the LOI and discussing all of our terms and conditions and their terms and conditions. We feel like it is a is a will be viable, strong and sustainable partnership for the upcoming years.
Right. And sorry. And and not to get too deep in the weeds, you know, we're, you know, apart from revenue, we we're going to derive from this group where they're actually going to be leasing our space. You know, I think there's excitement in the fact that, you know, there's going to be, you know, during the business hours during the week, there's going to be an additional forty plus people, forty employees plus their guests and other providers coming in that are they're going to be in our church and making it active and vibrant and and, you know, potentially also members of the church. The the negotiation that we talked to the to the city, we've talked to that some counsel from some legal counsel in regards to our status and our nonprofit status. And and the city is okay with what we're doing as long as, you know, it's a nonprofit organization that we're leasing to. That, you know, that that if you were going to go out on the market and say, okay, let's find somebody to lease this space, you know, maybe a nonprofit is not where you would go, but it works out, I think, perfectly for us because it's a nonprofit and because it's missionally aligned with us. And it there's a tax tax consequences that that do not come into effect that that would might change our status if it was an organization that wasn't a nonprofit organization. So that's that's in the weeds a bit. The, but John, I don't know if you were talking about structure of the lease and the terms of the lease, if we were going to go through all that on your.
Yeah, Todd, are you on the phone or are you on the can you see on the computer?
I can, I can see I'm 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 traveling, so I've got it not a place where y'all want to look at me, but.
So but so what I have on the screen right now is it, and I want to, so the on the FAQs is what I'm sharing that has some frequently asked questions that we thought would be helpful for our church members and anyone in the community who want to have some questions about it. One of the things that you you'll you'll be interested to know about is the space. Where will they be and how will they fit into our our church? We back before the COVID BC, we say on staff before COVID, we had the vision and kind of the forethought to rearrange and move our office spaces from the first floor back office area to most of the second floor is where the staff occupies the office now. And a lot of you, if you've been by the church, you've seen that Pastor Vance is now in the the library on the second floor. Emily is in the used to be the the choir director office and we've put the finance office back back their team back is where the children's ministry area is. And then what we should be known as the fun zone on the second floor near the CWC is now a shared office space between several of our program and discipleship and grow groups. Youth and Lori Hamlin and Debbie Mitchell and some others. And so we we did that before we even knew if we were going to have a partner or not, but but the timing worked out because then COVID came in and we've got this opportunity. So HSN is going to take over. They are asking for the office, our old office space, which is back by the new class in the back of the first floor. And they could actually use the entrance if needed over by our behind our dumpster area. We have that that accessible door for so HSN could have their employees and staff could be coming in and out of that door if need be. They're also welcome to come in the main main area as well, but they have their own, they'll have their own designated entrance way. They're going to do some minor remodeling. This is our original blueprint of the office area with this being the lead pastor's office and where Emily's office was and and the finance team and so forth, but they're going to do some minor remodeling and and pay for their own outfit. It comes as is and they will have to pay for whatever they bring in furniture wise and in any upgrades they do. But they're going to mostly be putting in portables and or cubicles, I mean, into these areas. And then the second place they're going to be utilizing is on the third floor. Because they have a staff of about forty plus full time members. And so they're going to be on if this is on the third floor now. If you go up the elevators and look to your right, there is a room that we have just been using for some of our walk to Bethelm storage. It's the south room on our third floor. There we're going to be leasing that to them as well, and they're going to be fitting that with their own office equipment and furniture and and get that set up for their team to have as well. So they'll be and that's been not utilized by the church. We have not done a lot to to fix up that space and they're going to cover those costs. And so between those two areas, that's sixty seven hundred square feet that they will be leasing from the church and using, which means we'll have approximately fifty extra people on our campus Monday through Friday during office hours, which I don't know how you feel about that, but I think that's pretty exciting to know that there'll be life in the building, people who've not seen First Church downtown. When they have meetings with other agencies, they will be coming in and and possibly, you know, using our conference room or our other classrooms and just giving that exposure and that connection with the Orlando and still part of community, I think is a huge opportunity that we, there are so many untold potentials along with that. So. Any questions about the space?
What about, what about the parking for them and the teachers down below?
So moving up on the FAQs. Be part of what we had to just to negotiate was was definitely parking. That's that is a huge commodity downtown and we we've got some some parking underground. We have about sixty five, seventy parking spots underground, but we did not want to give away the farm, Tim. So what we agreed to was we're going to give them twenty designated parking spaces Monday through Friday during the week. And the way I've figured that to work is I can is in our garage, if you look at the the side facing Roslyn Street, which is the east facing wall. There's about twenty spots there that on Monday through Friday will be the HSN parking. And so we've, the way it works on any given day during the week, we have our the WCDC Wesley staff parks along the north wall of the garage is where their staff parks. We have our church members and our volunteers and our visitors usually park on first come down the ramp and then and also by the the door and access door with a handicap parking. And so we were going to be giving up HSN, let them have twenty spaces on the far right side facing Roslyn Street. So that was what we negotiated with them and on they, again, going back to the marriage metaphor, where it's going to require some good communication. They understand that when we have our evening activities where we need, if we have a Wednesday night or a Thursday night program or activity where we need, we need the building occupied for church business, they know that their staff can can leave early on those days and they will not be in the building at all on Saturdays or Sundays. Their primary Monday through Friday, so evenings and weekends is still open for church use, which is great. So the times where we have we're less busy is when they will be in the building. And then there's things like that we still kind of iron out with them as far as the technology use, you know, their their phone and data plan. Make sure we have enough Wi Fi in the building and make sure they 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 cover themselves and we cover ourselves. And then, of course, the custodial maintenance, we're going to be have a lot more people in the building, obviously Monday through Friday, so they will take on some of the cleaning bill as well. And while the church is the landlord, we will handle the the big the big repairs and maintenance and and make sure we have keep the lights on, AC running. They will have to pay for their own cleanings and custodial as well as their own Wi Fi and phone. So. So one of the exciting things about this is just some of the upgrades you're going to bring to our building that will, you know, will there'll be a lot more wear and tear and use on the building, but the third floor was one of those things that we had not had the resources to to fix up and they will be able to do that.
Now, maintenance is also a part of the terms of the lease. There's a number that they're going to pay us for for rent, but there's also a square foot number they're going to pay us for maintenance and utilities. They 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 will be responsible for their own cleaning and and as John said earlier, we kind of look at this as a marriage and a partnership. So you know, we'll try to organize that with our cleaning service and their cleaning service and just make something that works for all of us. So.
So we've done a lot of talking. Are there other questions that have maybe popped up in your, there maybe in your head that you'd like some clarification on?
When when would they be occupying? When would that happen, you think?
Right now, the move in date is scheduled for May first, twenty twenty one. With the rent starting in April first of twenty twenty one. So they are currently in an industrial space over off of L B McLeod, close to First Baptist. And they, because of their contractual agreements with their current space, they couldn't get out until that date. And so they have to work out those details and get out of their their space and they they'll be moving over in in late spring.
Oh, it's I was asking because of the pant ongoing pandemic and the the extra bodies in the building, but I imagine a lot of them will continue to work at home like they probably are now.
Yeah, they they're, again, they have a staff of forty 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 full time people and they've had to adjust, just like we have and and a lot of other businesses have of adjusting their schedule or working from home and are working remotely. And so we will definitely may have to cross that bridge when we get to it, if we're still in the season and haven't had a vaccine by then, but 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 and the and the pandemic has slowed down a lot of this negotiation. We we just began to court them, talk to them just before the pandemic began February or so. And and then things could still be slowed down for everyone. They but they were very excited about the idea. They've showed their some of their staff and a lot of their board members have done walkthroughs, a number of walkthroughs. And they've had a lot of back and forth, but they they're very excited about moving on up to be downtown at First First Baptist Church. And so we feel, I feel that that God is in all this, the devil might be in the details, but I think God is in the big picture of this. If we can just kind of keep our faith and focus on and the fact that this is much bigger than than we are and we have this beautiful building, this beautiful space. And if we when we partner with a group like HSN, we will be able to do so much more for the community.
Yeah, and just an observation I want to check is that we'll have more than an office on the second floor for first man or whatever other kind of meetings that might ramp up in the coming next years.
Definitely, we we didn't, like I said before, we did not give away the farm to just to use a good old Georgia quote, but we 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 want to make sure we had space to still space to grow. We we also have a north room on the third floor. That is, it is not occupied and it's also not it's not necessarily finished, but it's it gives us some room to to grow when we need to.
There's some things we may not have in this church, but space is not one of them.
So where will you store things? If you don't have that.
We have so many closets in this church. It's unbelievable. We they have done it. John's done a great job and staff of actually the the large closet on the third floor where a lot of the Christmas decorations were kept and and such, they've added another row of racking in there and for space and storage and it, I think you guys are not pushed for anything anywhere, are you, John?
No, and actually, before I came on board, Bob Bishan sort of kind of had the had the prophetic vision to do some spring cleaning. And so we've done a good job of 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 kind of getting rid of some of the things that might have been sitting around that were not needed and not using. And they're now benefiting someone else. And so we've we've done a lot of cleanup and organizing and done a number of had a number of workdays in the spring where we we got things cleaned up. So it's so because it just a clean and tidy house just makes for better use for everyone. So it's.
Yeah, both of those rooms are empty now. They're they were quite full, but they've been, they've either been moved on to better uses or were consolidated and stored in a different place. So.
So things have been pretty busy around First Church, even though we've been in the pandemic. So.
Any other should be more questions.
I was gonna say, are there any other questions?
Well, if you think of a question between now and the coming days, feel free to email John and he can forward the question on to trustees and and get a reply back to you. This is something the trustees committee has been working on for months and have had extra meetings to kind of parse out details of the arrangement and and to figure out parking spaces and all of the details that John and Todd shared with you all. So I'm so grateful for their commitment and willingness to to partner with HSN and to to bring this group into the building. We've had good conversation about that and trustees and finance met this past week and they're kind of talking about you know, when the deal is signed and the lease is, you know, it's it's a for real thing. It's really happening and we have, you know, a move in date and all of that that's set. Between those two groups, we'll be working about in terms of kind of where the the rent money goes and how the utility money is is kind of not just received at the church, but where it's allocated to in the church budget. So they've already started having those conversations. But it's one of those things that you don't want to count your chickens before they hatch. And so we don't want to plan and our twenty twenty one operating budget for either this rent money or the utility money. Because something may happen and it may may, you know, God forbid, made the deal may not happen or it may be postponed. And so we want to be wise and good stewards of that. Of that partnership whenever it will take full effect. But if you have questions, please reach out to John Styles Williams. We will have a charge conference at the end of this month on November twenty ninth at four o'clock on Zoom. Babu Shang will be presiding at this charge conference and we will be going over the details of this. And officially vote members will be voting on it to kind of approve it so that it can go on to the lease portion of this partnership and making sure that we have, you know, the will of the body in moving forward with this. But it's exciting to have extra people in the building and it's exciting to see what what mission opportunities may arise when we're working in partnership with HSN. Vance, I know you had some remarks you wanted to share.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think a lot of times in this conversation, it kind of goes one direction or another. You know, one, the money, you know, this is an infusion of income to our budget. That's a great thing. But then also a sense of loss, you know, we're losing space and parking spaces and don't we need that and, you know, concern. I I want to just add one more dimension and I think it's about opportunity. I I brought in a pastor last fall who's done some work, who talked about the value of activating the space. If if you've ever been at the church when an outside group is there, I'm talking about during the week. When an outside group is there, it brings a whole different energy into the church and excitement and and that can generate an energy all of its own. Sometimes just in bringing in another dynamic can create new energy and excitement and momentum. And particularly a partner like this. And I I look around First Church and I see, I see dreams that we've had that maybe we've never gotten off the ground with. We have a kitchen gotten off the ground with. We have a kitchen that we don't use a whole lot, but 50 people in the building every day, you know, maybe we have an opportunity to do lunches that could create interaction between church members and HSN folk. We have a coffee bar that I, I think we, we might have a critical mass to actually start using that. That could generate income to the church. Midday exercise classes, midday meditation services, partnerships with HSN to bring in speakers and panel discussions and I, I just, it isn't just about the dollars and it isn't just about the loss. I think this is an opportunity for us to move forward in a long-held vision we've had, how we use our buildings, but also a commitment to homelessness. I mean, that is in the DNA of our church. And so these aren't just renters. I, I think this is a very strategic moment for us to move forward in some pretty, pretty interesting ways. Some of those conversations have not yet happened because we are working our way through the LOI and the lease. We are in a strange season with COVID, but I just see incredible opportunity in this that's way beyond a lease arrangement. I think this is a, a real opportunity for us to do some exciting ministry. So just wanted to add my two cents.
All right. Thank you, Vance. While we're still sort of talking about facilities and some of the accomplishments of the trustees committee this past year, I think at our last town hall meeting back in, gosh, the spring, we talked about a columbarium. Well, the columbarium is finished. It's in the courtyard. If you've been to one of our in-person outdoor services in the courtyard, you will have seen it. And if you've watched those Facebook Live services online, you might have seen it, noticed it. That's where we had the candles for the All Saints service a few weeks ago and where we were kind of standing in front of this morning even. But that's finished. And so we're really grateful for the trustees and Nancy and Tim and Harlan Hansen and a group that really kind of got the columbarium finished and it looks lovely. It blends right in with our building and kind of looks like it's been there all along. And we're grateful for the courtyard plant keepers for sprucing up the courtyard in time for our outdoor worship services, but it just kind of really went in conjunction with the columbarium, getting courtyard pressure washed and remulched and new land, new flowers and plants in the courtyard. It looks really great. If you haven't yet come to an in-person service and if you don't really feel comfortable coming to an in-person service, I invite you to come down during the week and check it out. Take a few moments out in the courtyard. It's a really lovely peaceful place to pray and just to reconnect with your church in that regard. And so thank you to all those that have been part of that project. With that, I'm going to move on to our next item of business. Ken and Melanie Lee and the Forward Together Group will be sharing some exciting things. So take it away.
Okay, I get to be speaker for the group today and I really appreciate your giving us some time during this. I wanted to give you a little bit of a background on our group. Shelley Denmark kind of put out an email to some folks after the Reformation Project met at our church. And Kim and I didn't even go to the Reformation Project, but she talked about having a debriefing and we thought, this sounds interesting. So we went. And, you know, we've been to a lot of meetings, a lot of gatherings. And I can't say I've, I've been to many that were that inspirational. And all it was, was some folks sitting around. We didn't know most of the people there and talking about the possibilities of actually being a church where all means all. Where we're truly affirming and welcoming of everyone and inclusive. And that was in early November 2018. And I can tell you, we had absolutely no idea what we were doing together or where this would go. For months, we had no idea, but we kept meeting. And we didn't even have a name. It was very obvious though, that the Holy Spirit was totally with us and something was happening. And so we kept being faithful and moving along. And we finally came to have a vision and a name. And our name is Forward Together, All Means All. And I can tell you, I'm very reluctant to call Forward Together a group. It's certainly not a committee. It's a family. It's absolutely a family, just like our church congregation is a family. We've, we put together a, a welcome statement addition kind of, and we were moving toward trying to figure out, what are we going to do? We would like to have the goal being eventually for one segment of, of our marginalized people in our community, the LGBTQ community, we would like to move toward becoming a reconciling church. So we, we wrote an additional piece to our welcome statement. And we took that to the church council in the summer. And we really hadn't thought that we would ask for a vote or is it, we just kind of wanted to tell people, what are we doing? Here we are, we've been meeting for a while now and we, we obviously, the spirit is moving and moving through us, moving in the church, moving in the community, moving in our country. It's, the spirit is moving. And so we thought we want to, we want to approach church council with this welcome statement. And then it just took off. It was like, no, let's just vote on it now. Okay. And it was unanimously approved. And I want to take a moment before I go on to ask Emily if she would share the, the welcome statement. If you could just take a minute to, to read it. The piece that we, yeah, Kim is gonna, Kim is going to read the piece that we added.
Right, the top paragraph was already there. So the highlighted portion is new. As of this summer, and many of you know of this already, but I, I don't think everybody does. "We celebrate the wonderful gift of diversity of our downtown community and world. We affirm that all people are created in the image of God and all are worthy of God's love and grace and community. We welcome and affirm the diversity of people of every sexual orientation, gender identity, race, ethnicity, national origin, immigration status, age, faith history, marital status, physical ability, cognitive ability, socioeconomic status, and all who have been marginalized. We are better together. You are welcome here."
And you can, there you go. Thanks. So we were astounded at how quickly this, this passed, not because of the hearts of people, but just because, you know, churches can be kind of slow-moving. And so we thought, I mean, we had a plan that this was, this was a key part of it, but then we want to not just, it's not just about having a statement. It's about living into that statement and making sure that the community knows about the statement and that we are projecting the face we want to in the community. So what we wanted to do was make sure that everyone is on board in our church. And to do that, you have to get some conversations started. So the first thing we did was we had, some of us had been familiar with the book, The Holy Love, and had met Steve Harper and one of our group is, Steve Harper is like one of his very best friends. So we decided, let's do a book study. Let's see if we can get this ball rolling and get people to really talk together in small groups. And so that's, that's what you have, many of you have experienced over the last, you know, since October or so. And we got, it was exciting, the types of things we were able to put into it, like Steve Harper did a personal video introduction of each chapter. We got special permission from Abington Press to let, to let me read the book and have that be available to our church members. We had a Dave Beeler put together an awesome study guide slash kind of facilitator guide, so people wouldn't be scared to lead it. It was very easy to lead and you could also, it became almost kind of something packaged that we could move on. And it, it's just, it became really exciting, just the packaging of it, just the, what, what was created, so many people working together. More than a hundred people actually participated in the study through various Sunday schools, through a couple of kind of at-large groups. We got some feedback from those and every single one of the feedback mentioned, yes, I, I definitely accept this welcome statement. We had another piece that, you know, we just sat around the table month after month, throwing out things, thinking, can we do this? And most of this work happened during the pandemic, so it's, I mean, some people had time off during the time, the pandemic, you know, a whole bunch of us, like teacher folks, we did not. We were trying to figure out how to, to lead in a new world. So it's amazing that this kind of stuff came together. We, we decided to put together a video. Wouldn't it be cool to have a video? And so our son Kerry and Sue Seepel's daughter, Megan, they were interviewed by Vance on Zoom and it, and it became a powerful tool to reach people's hearts, because these are people we know. These are kids who grew up in our church. And there's another one in the works. It's in the editing process now where Joe Nesbit, not the big Joe, but the little Joe is going to be interviewed and also Elizabeth Preston Hughes and Michael Shortle. Then there's another one that's just still kind of on the thinking about it part, and that's to interview the parents. Because we have so many parents at our church whose children ended up being LGBTQ. And as, you know, the saying goes, it's like, once your kids come out, then at some point, well, when your kids come out and you go in the closet. And at some point you have to come out too. And there's just so much to be dealt with in that. So the conversation has been started. And we are hoping that you will embrace this welcome statement and live into it. But I want to tell you another thing is that that welcome statement listed lots of groups. And one thing we learned from talking to Megan, who was in our Holy Love Study Group and also talking to our son, is that it is important to name the people. Because we thought, if, you know, how can you possibly get every single person in there? Why don't you just say, and all marginalized people, because it's important for the people to look for themselves and see themselves in our welcome statement. And if somebody comes along who's marginalized and says, we don't see ourselves there, then maybe we add in another group. But it is very important. And once we're, you have not heard the end of us. LGBTQ group, that's the first one. There's so many others out there. You know, with my sister, the intellectually disabled group is going to be in there at some point too. And I just wanted to say something that is, that is paraphrasing something that Kerry said, our son said in the interview with Vance. He was saying it about LGBTQ people. I'm going to say it about marginalized people in general. Is that marginalized people don't just need us as a congregation. We need them. Without them, we are missing a piece of the puzzle, a voice in God's community. We are missing one of the faces of God. And we don't hold the keys. We don't, we just don't hold the keys to the kingdom, y'all. But we do have the responsibility to help people come in and feel that wonderful welcome, that inclusion and the, the right to participate fully in whatever God gives us as people. So thank you for honoring us with the time here today.
Thank you, Kim and Melanie for sharing. Thank you to the Forward Together Group. If you have questions, you can reach out to Dave Beeler, Kim and Melanie, and they'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, get you more information about their work. Or if, you know, you have trouble contact, finding their contact information, if you want to reach out to me, I can always connect you with this group. We're grateful for their continued advocacy and work for inclusion so that all may have a seat at the table.
Emily, I forgot to mention, as you were saying there, if anybody wants to, we have that audiobook. It's only available for our church members, but if anybody wants it, let, let Emily know. She can tell me, I'll send it to you. If anybody wants kind of the packaged study guide, we'll send it to you. And in fact, I've already sent it to someone at the conference level, because Alice Williams had me present at the conference. And I asked if, if anybody wants this package, here you go. And we've already sent it.
Great.
One question?
Yes.
We, our class has been led by four people. We've learned from the new class and all of that stuff. But I understand all of the work that's necessary to go into it, but how do we become an affirming church? We can't just change a statement. We need to change a statement, yes. But how do we vote or how do we become a, an affirming church? What, what does that process look like and when does that start? I mean, you've got to get a lot of people on board first.
Well, I can, I can give you some of that. If I can send you, we did, Dave did an entire presentation about that, that I helped put together a PowerPoint for it that outlines all the steps and.
And we're on that, we're on that process so that.
We are totally on that process.
What, what we're seeing at Sunday School class and what we participated in October, November was the beginnings of it, but.
Right, so in, in essence, David, and that's a good question. We just need to do what the new class did about 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Which is that, and we've already adopted as a church a welcoming statement, we would need to vote. And, you know.
You've also got to get everybody on board so that you don't lose the vote.
Yes, and, and, and that's what, you know, part, part of studying a book by, by a Methodist pastor, you know, showing the biblical basis for, for this position is all about. And so ultimately, I, I don't think we've picked a a date yet for a vote, but to become a reconciling church, we would need a, a vote. I think it just has to be a majority, but that's not what we would want to do. We, we hope that it would be, you know, a very strong substantial majority. And those of you who took the study, if you, it would be helpful if you could do the survey answer. We've got a bunch of responses. Dave Beeler put together a terrific survey. That's, that's going to be helpful in the, in the process you're talking about, David.
My, my question was more, are we really participating in the, in the full scope of what we're trying to, to, to get to be an affirming church? And the answer is yes.
Yes.
It's, it's just basically being started now. Okay, thank you.
I think the sermon series has been leading along about all meaning all.
What sermon series? What are you talking about?
I think all of your things about leading through the Bible. I, I think you keep, both of you put things in on all meaning all, not using those words. Not using those words maybe, but I think you definitely have it planned in the seeds for thought.
Well, thank you, Penny. You know, certainly this town hall meeting and having Forward Together share, uh, is part of that process too. Um, of getting people on board, of having people, you know, be informed about what's going on in the church and, and being informed about this process. Um, so certainly, you know, Melanie will be able to share the timeline and kind of where we are along that, uh, with their information. I'm going to turn it back over to Vance for a few more items.
Yeah, so, um, before we leave this topic, just, uh, just a editorial comment, you know, the, you know, it's one thing for the whole congregation to become a reconciling congregation. Um, but, uh, New Class led the way, uh, years ago. And they don't have to be the only one, um, you, you know, in the, in the, as we work in that direction, every Sunday school class could talk about it and consider it, every, every Sunday school, every, every Bible study, every ministry. Uh, we can have a reconciling choir, we could have a reconciling handbell group, we could have a reconciling, uh, Thursday morning Bible study. You, every group in the church can go through the process of becoming a, a reconciling group. Um, and maybe some of y'all ought to consider that. So just drop, drop that seed. Uh, wanted to change the topic, want to remind you that, uh, we are, we have been in and are in our stewardship campaign. Uh, we intentionally went a low-key direction this year, knowing that we're just in a different season and trying to be respectful of everyone. Um, and so we, we, hopefully you got the mailer in October. Uh, and you've heard the announcements, everybody I see, every face I see in this, uh, Zoom call, you know what stewardship's about. You understand why it matters, uh, both in terms of, uh, disciple, your own discipleship and also how, how the church's budget works. Um, and so I would just implore all of you, if you have not already made your pledge to do, do so ASAP. Um, really, uh, we're, we're, we're needing, we're kind of at, on the wire. Uh, time now, time is now to get our plans in order for next year. Um, I know Mike Barnhill is with us. Mike, do you have any updates you would share?
Yes, uh, so far we're about, about, we've heard about from a third of the people we've had before, so, uh, we're on the right track. Uh, and, uh, I just, I noticed Friday and Thursday and Friday, we've had a lot of, a lot of ones come in. So I think there's momentum building and, uh, we, um, so I think it's getting the word out, a lot, a lot of times people, some people wait for the last minute. And, and, and if you can encourage people that this would be the last minute time, so, uh, to take across, take us across the finish line. So we've got a lot of work to do. I know there's some, uh, I wouldn't, we're going to start, um, calling some people and, and, and sending some letters out here next week. But I, uh, I, I look around, I see, I've heard from lots of you from this, uh, this group. So I do, I want to thank you for being faithful in your pledging, so, um, it just, uh, just get the word out that it, this would be the time to do it. And we'd like to hear from people right now and get on board with what the good things are happening at the church.
Great, thank you, Mike.
So the, um, changing the subject again, so we wanted to give you a little update on our, our plans for Advent and Christmas. Um, you know, one of the things that we had heard from a great many of you, uh, has been anticipating, uh, anticipating the loss of Christmas at First Church. I mean, that's obviously, um, special to all of us, starting with the decorations and the, the Christmas concert and Christmas Eve, I mean, that, you know, the Advent season is just a very meaningful time. And we've all wondered, like, how do we do this, uh, during COVID? And, um, you know, as I think we all are probably like, aware, COVID numbers are currently on the rise. Um, there, there's a lot of concern that, that the current, um, the current wave is going to increase after Thanksgiving. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of information out about, um, uh, an influx of out of town visitors coming at Christmas to the Orlando area now that the attractions are back open and hotels are making reservations, uh, at a very high rate, which is great news for our economy. But it, but it means that we'll be getting a lot of folks coming to town that could cause Orlando to become a hotspot. So obviously, whatever we do, we want to be very cautious, which is the approach we've had with um, everything since the pandemic began. So, so here are the plans, uh, that we, we're pretty excited about. Um, we, we now, you know, as you know, are worshiping, uh, in person on Sunday mornings outside 9:30 and 11:00. Um, if you have not been yet, I encourage you to come at 9:30, it's a little cooler. Uh, but, but 11:00 is still beautiful and I think those services are working. If you're not comfortable coming in person, I fully understand that. And, uh, we continue to offer the pre-recorded, uh, 10:30 online service, and we will continue to do that indefinitely. Uh, we have, we don't know forever what we'll do, but that, that we will continue to pre-produce that online service. For Christmas, um, what we are planning on doing is producing a, uh, Christmas online service for those who are not comfortable coming to a Christmas Eve service in person. So that will be available. And we have not set the date yet, but we are planning to premiere that prior to Christmas Eve. Um, because what we know is on Christmas Eve, if you're going to watch the video, you're going to do it according to your schedule. Um, and so for us to say six o'clock on Christmas Eve is our online service, you're going to watch it when you want to watch it, we know that. So we are going to premiere it earlier in the week so we could potentially watch it as a, as a community. Um, but then it's available to you. If you, on, you know, if you're not comfortable coming to in person, then that service is available to you and your family. Watch it whatever time you would like on Christmas Eve, if, if that's what you would like to do. And now we're making plans for, uh, outdoor Christmas Eve services. Uh, we think that the thing that we, we hear the most, uh, is that people want to sing the Christmas carols. And the thing that we don't want to do is bring everybody inside to sing. And so, uh, we think that we can, uh, provide a service outside where we can sing the carols, be socially distanced, provide the, you know, opportunity for candlelight. It'll be a simpler service, but we think it'll be a beautiful service. Um, and, and we're, we have, uh, we're working with the city to close off Magnolia, uh, to reroute the buses. So, um, so basically what we're talking about is that we will, we will use the portico as a kind of our staging area. Uh, and then we will do seating, uh, you know, through the sidewalk into the street and then across the street as well. We'll have police, we'll have barricades, so it'll be a safe environment. Uh, we, we are still working on the times. Uh, we, um, have discovered that there may also be an event outside at, uh, at Dr. Phillips. And, um, so we don't want to run concurrently with that, but we think we can schedule in a way that's complimentary and not con, and conflicting. So, um, so, uh, we will do RSVP. Um, so, uh, we, we believe we can, we can do outdoor seating, um, over 300 socially distanced, safe, safely distanced. So we think we will do, uh, we'll RSVP for that. And, uh, we'll, we'll likely have more than one service so we can accommodate numbers and spread the group out. Now you may think that doesn't sound like enough. Um, uh, we currently on our live services are, um, have about a hundred people coming. We've done it three weeks in a row, we've been consistently about the same. Between two services, we've got a hundred people, which is a quarter to a third of our usual attendance. And so if that were to hold true for Christmas Eve, we think we can more than cover the numbers, which, you know, I, it's anybody's guess. But we think between RSVPing and that number of chairs, we should be able to more than accommodate, uh, those who would want to come and, um, participate in a live service. So, um, I wonder if anybody had any comments or questions about, about the holidays?
I have one, Vance. Are we going to ask the, uh, notify the community around us, the condos and stuff, that we will be having service outdoors?
Yeah, we, we've been beginning that conversation. The thing that we, I mean, we, the thing that we want to be, of course, we always want to invite the community. I'm a big, huge proponent of that. But we also just want to be, we don't want to get overrun that night. And so we're, we're trying to think of how to make it known, but at the same time, we're not necessarily, it's not necessarily the year for drawing a big crowd. Um, next year, we'll draw the big crowds, uh, but we will make it known for sure.
Vance, will there be, uh, any cantata, Christmas cantata from the choir or special time of music that they'll present?
The online service will be that this year, the, the special music will go to that. And then of course we'll have music on Christmas Eve as well. Tim?
With the increase in COVID cases, has there been any discussion or thought about having to drop back to a previous stage in our reopening plan? I mean, that's, that's something, I'm just wondering if that's entered into thought?
It has, it's on my, it's in my thoughts every day. Um, honestly, I don't, I don't, I don't, I, I, on my, every day. Um, so far council has reviewed that every, every month as the council meets of where we are. So I would, I would anticipate that, uh, that will continue. Um, at, at the moment, we're kind of where we are with the, with the in-person services is, is people are kind of deciding for themselves. Uh, you know, we have folks in the congregation who just desperately want to be together in person. And, uh, so we're honoring that by offering the service. And then others that just aren't ready are kind of self, self-regulating in that way. So, uh, at the moment, I think that's working. If it just gets to the point where the numbers are crazy and council, uh, we all agree that this, we just, we're taking too much risk, then, then we may make that decision as well. Yeah. Keeping our fingers crossed and praying. I'm excited about, I just, I'm, I'm excited about both the online service and the Chris, and the outdoor service. I think, uh, it's, I think it's going to be special and memorable, uh, for those who feel comfortable to come. I think it'll be one of those Christmas Eves that, that will look back and like, wasn't that, wasn't that interesting? Wasn't that fun that we did that together? Uh, I think it has, I think it, I think it's going to be special. Maybe we won't want to go back indoors, who knows? We'll see.
All right, I'm looking, I don't see any hands waving and any people jumping to share a comment or a question. Um, thank you all so much for your time, uh, this afternoon. Uh, Penny, was that a question or a comment? Oh, just a wave. Okay, perfect. Um, and, uh, if you have other questions or comments, feel free to email myself, email Vance, um, any of the, the staff members, uh, connected to a ministry area. Um, thank you for hearing some of these updates. It's exciting to hear how we are, um, kind of, even in this season of pandemic, figuring out what we can do and how we can, uh, be more and more welcoming, uh, to the community and perhaps grow to more and more reflect the community that's around us. Um, that isn't maybe what's currently in our building, but what could be. Um, and what, who, who could call First Church home and find their place among us. With that, I'd like to invite you to, uh, join with me in sharing our benediction. May the Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord may the Lord and
And give you peace.
Amen, go in peace this afternoon.
Thank you all.